Reconvene the meeting of the North Reading School Committee. We just came out of an executive session. First item on our agenda is public input. Anybody from the public? Seeing none here other than people who are on our agenda. Spencer, that, student report.
Hello, hello everyone. My name is Dan Mann. For those who do not know me, I'm a senior here at North Reading High School and this is my second year here as a student representative to the North Reading School Committee. Starting with academics, a little stuff going on at North Reading High School. We've got to the point in the year where our mid-year exams are about to take place from January 17th to January 20th. Students have been preparing for these for the past few weeks or so and teachers have been getting students ready to take our mid-year exams as they do count for 10 percent of our final grade of the year. The quarter also ends on January 20th, which marks the last day of midterms. For seniors, college acceptances have been rolling in, especially for the early action students and also rolling admission. So it is a very exciting time, a year for students, as many students are hearing back from school. And also SATs continue to start getting rolling for the junior class. Many students have been taking those with the ACTs and SATs. So this is a big year for academics as we kind of reach the middle of the year after our nice holiday break. For our Fine Arts Department, North Reading High School Political Society hosted Massachusetts House Minority Leader Brad Jones to come speak to us on our local, state, and national politics. We had about 20 people at the event, was really eye-opening for students who were seeking a career in politics and wanted to get to know a little bit about our state and how it runs, especially at the house level. And also being the minority leader of the Republican Party here in Massachusetts, it was interesting to hear a different point of view and ask questions. College Speaker Series is about to begin here at North Reading High School with guest speaker Nick Rocco from the Class of 2007. He was a member of Southern New Hampshire University and this is an ongoing series we have here with college speakers so students can learn a little bit about their universities and hopefully plan out something for the future. On January 12th, we have a Lunch with a Scientist, which is a continuing program here at North Reading High School, which offers a wide variety of scientists. It attracts a very large crowd, especially in our science departments for students looking to go into careers of medicine, natural science, environmental science. In this time around, we'll be hosting a neurobiologist, which I know is going to be a very entertaining crowd. It usually fills about this entire room here in the DLL, which is hosted by the, I actually don't have it here, but it's also by a club here at North Reading High School. Very special moment for seniors tomorrow as we have cap and gown fitting during Power Block, which is, this is the only time we're going to be doing it through the year. So this is a very special moment, our transition here as the Class of 2017 prepares to graduate. And also for the Drama Department, auditions for Brief Encounter, which will be performed at the Massachusetts Drama Fest. Auditions for that is happening right now, which will be happening in the spring. And after a very successful fall program with Oliver, which got amazing reviews and I believe almost sold out every single show, we believe this is going to be another great success here from the Drama Department. And also winter sports are in full effect. A few notables, the boys hockey team is seven, six and oh, and they just beat Masco five to nothing over the holiday break, which is unbelievable for the boys, especially beating Masco, which is such a close competitor to us. The boys track team is three and two, with the girls team being four and one. They had a meet today, I'm not sure how it finished up, but that was a three-town meet. And then what, boys basketball is five and one, beating Amesbury the other day by, I believe, almost 35 points. And they have a game tonight, Ipswich, with the girls taking, facing Ipswich right now in the gym. And also, I believe this is the first year that our ski team has began here at North Reading High School, which is really wonderful to see, especially living in Massachusetts, really taking advantage of the mountains and hills we have around here with Bradford, New Hampshire, and everything like that. So that's it from me on the academics, fine arts, and sports front. And from my student work tonight, this is an essay I'd written on in our honors British Literature class. I apologize for there not being many corrections on it, I'll pass it around right now, being that everything is digital nowadays. But this essay I had written on A Midsummer Night's Dream by William Shakespeare is one of the most famous British authors there is, and talks about reason and love and how the two can sometimes come together for the worse and sometimes the better, really treat people differently. So with reason and love, reason we tend to think with our heads and love, we tend to think with our hearts. And a lot of the times, in any situation, we let reason and love intertwine with each other and sometimes it can have a worse effect than we thought. So that was an essay we had written for our British Literature class. And it was really a great way to get into famous British literature, including William Shakespeare and many pieces of his work. Now we're on our poem unit. So it's been a great class and we've been writing a ton of essays. So that's it from me.
Mr. Chair. The hockey team, seven and oh.
Seven and oh, I apologize. I hope that's on the record, seven and oh. Give me the mic, seven and oh.
And they have two big games, the three big games coming up. They got North Andover, Triton, and Newburyport.
Yeah, they had a tough five-game stretch there. They won the first, too.
Right, right. And the winter sports seems to be great. You mentioned Oliver again, that was a tremendous performance by the Maskers again.
Yeah, the sets, the music, the performance overall was really good.
Outstanding.
How's the baseball team looking?
Good. We actually just started our captain's practices the other day, so we've been utilizing the turf area in the fitness center, so.
Up in the batting cages, then?
Yeah, we'll be good this year.
All right. I'm going to hold you to that.
Yeah, hold it. Yeah, Mr. Nosie knows.
All that athletic performance is very good, but it's not nearly as good as Dan's performance when he comes in here.
Yeah, exactly.
I particularly appreciate that you enjoyed your visit with Shakespeare.
Oh, love it.
One of my favorite authors.
Will you be attending the inauguration?
I am, actually.
You are?
Yeah.
I thought you might be.
He told me that today, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm driving down on Thursday.
I can't believe I'm going to miss it.
Alls I can say about Dan is he was right. He saw it before all of us.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think in consideration of our guests, we'll move right on to new business and a presentation of representatives of Northeast Metropolitan and Regional and Vocational High Schools, Judy Diamond, North Reading's representative, and Mr. David DeBarry, the superintendent and director, and Ms. Carla Scuzzarella, the principal. And we'll pass it on to the folks to make a presentation of the programs and initiatives taking place there.
Thank you very much for inviting us here again this year. It's something we really do look forward to. And it gives me great pleasure to introduce our two new administrators. Those of you already know David DeBarry, who was our principal last year, is now our superintendent. And to my right is Carla Scuzzarella, who is our new principal. And we are very happy to have her on board, too. We've had some very exciting things going on at Northeast that pertains to North Reading. We've had two students recently from North Reading just won the Abigail Adams Scholarship, which is, as you know, a great honor. And also, we've been involved at the North Reading Little League Field, helping to rebuild the dugouts there, work on several of the buildings, and getting it up and running to give a good presentation because, as you know, they are hosting.
That's great.
The Little League World Series. So when they came forward and asked me about doing something, it was with great pleasure that I presented to our school committee and that we did that. And I have to say, two of the students, the carpentry students up from North Reading, and to see them with such pride working on that was really great to see, as well as the students from other cities and towns that also played there. And I believe, I think Mr. DeBarry is hoping his son's going to play there in the World Series. So that's just some of the things I'd like to share. I know there's a lot of interest in what's coming up in regards to our new school, and I'm sure that's really top reason why you have us here tonight. And so I am now going to turn it over to Mr. DeBarry and he can address where we are with that, and we'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Mr. DeBarry. Thank you. And again, thanks for having us. Ms. Diamond and I shared at dinner, we stopped at Joe Fish and it was very special because we happened to bump into one of our co-op students who was working there, and also one of our culinary arts students who is a part-time worker there. So, and we got to talking, the three of us, about the special relationship that we have with North Reading. And you've always been very supportive of us and we felt so privileged when we got the opportunity to give back with the Little League project. But it really was an important project for our students. We've had a focus this past year especially on employability skills and we're trying to stay in line with the governor's initiative, which we strongly agree with. So for our students to be out there, working on a job identical to what they'll see when they get out and into the workforce, was a great privilege for us, other than to provide some great resources for the town. We are happy to say we're back to being a Level One school. We took a drop last year for the first time and we dropped down to Level Two. And we really worked hard with our math department and we got ourselves right back up to Level One. So we're very happy about that. We've improved in our co-op numbers, our MCAS scores, and our Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients were a total of 85 this year. So we're very happy with some of the progress we've made. Last week, we had a legislative breakfast, really to introduce our long-term goal of a new building, such as what you have here. We're in the very early stages, too early to even talk about money and numbers and different things, but it's something that we really wanted to share with everyone from the beginning. So it's an exciting time. My son's calling me on FaceTime, I apologize. I have an iWatch, I never, I didn't know Paywa, FaceTime worked on an iWatch, but I guess it does. I'll have to show him a copy of this. So anyway, if anyone has any questions about the project, I'd be happy to answer them. I would, you know, just like to stop by saying, we did a pre-feasibility study. It's not something that's required, but it's something that, out of the Northeast budget, we really wanted to look at whether this was something that we wanted to bring forward to the towns for consideration. So we looked at three options. We looked at a new building, we looked at a complete renovation, and we looked at the possibility of a renovation with an addition, to see what the best process would be for us. And we used the architect, the same architect that worked here on this building.
Oh, you used Orin Whitty?
Yeah, yeah. So if you have any questions.
Cliff, go ahead. So where are you in terms of the statement of interest, submitting a statement of interest to MSBA?
Right, so we were not accepted this year. So we just found that out a couple days ago. We got our letter that said we weren't accepted, but we feel confident going into next year. We knew this year would be difficult because it was very well-known that there were some major projects that were on the MSBA list that were going to take up the majority of the funding. So we're looking towards next year, just like many other communities, and feel confident we'll have a much better opportunity to get in.
Just as a follow-up, when the three options, have you decided which option you're going to pursue?
Yes, it would absolutely have to be a new building.
That's what I expected, yeah.
And it actually, it was nice, though, to see it in black and white, in what the cost would be, so that when we go to towns, we can show you, hey, we just don't want a new building, this is what the other two options would cost, which would actually be much more than a new building.
And so you don't know yet at this time what your reimbursement rate would be from MSBA, do you?
Yeah, we had, if we were accepted this year, it would have been above 72 percent. So 72 percent would have been the minimum. So we are also confident that that would be a similar number next year as well, if we're accepted.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Do you have to have approval of all of the towns in the district, or is it a majority?
Yes, so there are two options. We'd have to have a unanimous approval from all of the different town boards, or we can go for a vote, a ballot election. Our goal would be to get support from the towns, from the boards. And then, you know, if that didn't work out, to really step back and take a look at what the section, second option would entail. But we want support from the boards.
Because I think one of the things that we're going to have, in fact, I don't understand it, maybe some on the other, on the board here do, how it's determined, is it, how it's determined what each town pays the school? Obviously, part of it's going to be how many students you're sending there, but there's got to be other issues also, I would assume that will come into play.
Right. It would go back to the original agreement, which would be based on how many students you have there. So we wouldn't expect North Reading to really feel it, or, you know, notice much of a difference in what you would pay.
So we'd pay, we'd essentially pay through how much we pay for each student?
Right, so if you, right, so if you had 33 students out of 1,250, we would divide it up. It would be a very, very, very little small cost for North Reading compared to some of the other towns.
Some of those other cities and towns, though, now, if you get, say you get 75 percent, let's just throw that out there, but you're talking about some of the other cities and towns that aren't property-rich, you know, some of the inner-city kids that come there. Do they also, could they get federal money, or will they have to raise their taxes? I mean, how does it work for them?
Right.
Chelsea or Everett or whoever.
Right. It would cost a little more for those towns. However, you know, one thing we were able to break down at our legislative breakfast is when you're dividing amongst 12 towns over a 30-year bond, at 72 percent, it really shouldn't make that great of a difference, that it would hurt a community as far as needing an override or really feeling it in their yearly budget.
I think it's clear that you need a new facility there. I think it's crystal clear. And I think it's also clear that, well, it's clear to me, that more kids should be going to vocational, technical schools and not, some kids, I think, feel like they have to go to college in order to be successful in life. And I think we need more kids looking at vocational, technical schools and employability as you were talking about. So, you know, obviously, it's always a financial issue, but I strongly support a brand-new facility there, I think.
Would you build on the same site?
So we have a lot of land, fortunately, at Northeast, so we would be able to build behind our school.
That's a big plus.
Yeah, and then actually tier down our building and put fields or parking there as well. Yep, we have a couple flats, yeah, we have three levels.
That's helpful. We built into a mountain, basically.
Yeah.
And we created a couple of mountains.
Right, exactly.
Congratulations, by the way, on the Level Ones.
Oh, thanks so much.
Great work to get back.
Thank you so much.
This year. Also, thank you for the help with the Little League fields. That's really exciting, the state championship for the Little League World Series in North Reading. That's fantastic.
Yeah, thank you. Carla, did you want to just say hello and tell us a little bit about where you came from?
I'll just say hi. I'm in my first year at Northeast. I've spent the last nine years at North Andover High School. And my son played in the Little League World Series. He was on that Saugus team.
Oh.
So I'm really happy they're doing your Little League fields. It's close to my heart. I'm enjoying every moment of every day in this new opportunity. I love the vocational component of the building. I love going in and out of our shops. It is wonderful to see students putting their learning to work immediately. When you're an academic principal or an academic high school, you know, you don't always see the connections students make until later. And so it's been gratifying for me to watch students really take what they're getting in their classroom situations and then watch them in the metal fab class welding, or in the HVAC room, where that's my husband's background, so I'm always interested to see what's going on in there. But it's really great and the kids there are wonderful. The kids from North Reading that we have are terrific. As Mrs. Diamond said, two were Adams Scholars, and we had a nice breakfast for all of our students to acknowledge that. It's a big accomplishment, especially, you know, you're familiar, I'm sure, with our schedule. They're only in academics every other week, so the fact that they're able to attain that level is great. And the fact that we bounced back to a Level One, I worked for three years in North Andover trying to get us back to Level One, it's not easy.
Not easy.
You have to really put your nose to the grindstone and the staff and the students did a fantastic job in that short amount of time to get the school back up to Level One. So I'm really proud and pleased to be there.
If you're really interested in HVAC, you should meet with our facilities manager and take a walk around and see the stuff we have here. It's.
I think you're better off just opening and closing the windows without any.
Everything's computerized, digitized, and, you know, you touch one thing, and the next 47 other things, and.
And by the way, there's hardly a meeting that we have with the school committee that there's not some connection to Saugus.
Exactly.
It's a deeper one than you know.
Yeah. I want you to know that John was my student.
He was your student?
Yes.
I would have thought the other way around.
No, oh, no. My first year teaching.
Oh, my God.
I had the privilege of having John in class.
And then her son was my student.
And my two sons had Mr. Bernard.
Imagine that. Was he a good student?
He was. A poor kid, I don't know how he really became a teacher. I was only in my first year, it was not a great situation.
Did you teach English, though?
No, I was a history teacher. So he put up with a lot in those classes.
A lot of years.
Well, I think it's, you know, as long as it was a non-math subject, I think John would have done all right.
What they don't realize is that every time they come to a meeting, they have an association with Saugus.
Exactly.
My first 16 years of my life were in Saugus.
But we did the background check on John, we didn't go backfoul.
Yeah, that Saugus.
One thing that's interesting on school projects is, you know, and I was going to talk about this a little later, but we spent, and everybody in town knows, 123 million approximately for this project, and we, I think, ran it up, what, 49 percent from the state?
Oh, 49, yeah, 49.
49 percent. And I was just looking at the Saugus project, and they're looking at between 150, 160 million to build a joint middle school, high school with shared core facilities. So the costs are, that's why you've got to get it done now, because the costs are really going up.
They're not going down. They're not going down.
I wouldn't say skyrocketing, but, you know, we felt we were lucky to get in at the right time and we still ended up spending 123 million dollars. So it was well worth it, but it's a burden.
As you can see, we're pretty excited with the team that we have running our school. For me, as a teacher there for 26 years, and now being the vice chairman of the school committee and seeing how it has grown, has been, is very emotional experience. We have so many students on a waiting list, which really bothers the school committee, as you can imagine, because we want every student that wants a vocational education to be able to get that. And in order to do that, we need a bigger school. It's not a good thing to tell kids they can't come to the school. I would definitely like to see more North Reading students there. The job market is incredible. We have more jobs for co-op than we have students. So there's a big demand from the job market. And we have great support with the legislators, too. I was very impressed with the breakfast that we had at the school last week. How many of them were there, including the Speaker of the House?
Wow.
And I happened to sit with the mayor from Walden, very nice young man, but very concerned about the money, as everybody is. But you take a look around at our 12 communities, and almost every single one of them has a brand-new high school.
Oh, yeah.
Do the vocational school students deserve less?
No, they don't.
And we were excited about what we can do with the new school. And we look forward to sharing that with you in the future.
Well, good luck, it's a long process. It is. It's a difficult process.
And we're ready for it. I happen to be going in as chairman of the new school building, so.
Judy, there's still time to get out.
She needs to call.
There's still time to get out.
I tried, I tried.
You need to call Chuck. Chuck Karucci will give you, Chuck Karucci will teach you the ropes.
Oh, I'm very friendly with Chuck. As you know, Jerry, I'm true, we'll get plenty of help and opinions from him.
You kind of touched upon it. If you build the new school, what's the student population that you're going to be building it for?
Well, right now, our student population's 1,200.
1,250 is our population, so we'd be looking at a minimum 1,500.
Wow, that's a lot of students.
Well, right now, we have like 300 kids on a waiting list.
Every year.
Every year. And that's, ah, too many.
That's not right.
That's not right.
And there's nothing we can do. I mean, you can only fit so many students in a building.
So those students just end up going to whatever high school in their city or town?
Yeah.
With no vocational?
Right.
So we will be hoping to get North Reading support. I'm anticipating that we will. We're going to be working very hard, whether we got the permission to move forward with it or not, we're still going to be pursuing it and working very, very hard.
Oh, after.
It's not something we're just going to wait until next year, I can assure you of that.
Good.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much. Carla, it was great to see you. Well, we're here for the agreement.
I'd like to please.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Alvin.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you again. We'll look forward to next year.
Maybe even sooner, Judy, depending on how things go.
Thanks a lot.
Bye-bye. Looks like I won't skip that. Okay, I guess we'll go back to our continued business.
Sure.
MSBA and SSBC update.
So Mr. Chairman, and to the committee, not, the list is growing, I think, a little bit shorter from my report. And I'm going to kind of go out of order, I guess. There was some punchless work done over the Christmas vacation week, the three days that the school was open. So the list is getting smaller with the punchless items to be addressed. And I did want to also note that through a little bit of perseverance, we were able to identify that the projector, that you're actually, Mr. LaPretta and Mr. Nosie have a presentation tonight to use, we have a new projector in this room through no cost. Quite honestly, Dr. Daley and I had been pretty insistent that we didn't think that the projector ever provided the kind of quality that we thought it should in this room.
I thought it was my eyes, but.
And so, yeah, I started to believe that it was my eyes. But we had someone come out, we did pay a small amount of money, really a relatively small amount of money, for a service call, just for some other work that we wanted to have reviewed in this room. And I asked the gentleman to take a look at the projector, and he did, and he very quickly determined that he thought it was faulty, and he replaced it with a brand-new one. So tonight is the first time we're going to use it formally. We did, Mr. LaPretta ran a couple of tests for me afterwards, just before the Christmas vacation week. And I'm of the opinion that the quality has much improved, so that's some good news. And it's somewhat project-related, I guess, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Cliff, just one.
Go ahead.
From a middle schooler, the bubblers are still not 100 percent.
Don't even, don't even go there.
John, you know, it's on my mind.
Jerry and I have been talking.
I'd like to get a report from Wayne.
Okay, so as of when, though? Because we had, I, Michael Connelly and I directed Wayne to have our plumber come out. And an extensive amount of work was done over the Christmas vacation. To the best of my knowledge, everything is in working order. We, I can tell you what the problem is.
It could have been last week because.
We'll check them when we go out.
Yeah, we'll check them out by then.
You're welcome to check them, because we have, yeah, we have. And ultimately, what we determine what the problem is.
Some don't even, don't have much water pressure, some are too much water pressure.
Right, some come about this high.
Some of it is not going to be as easily resolved as it sounds, as crazy as it, let me, let me explain to you what I know. We were told that by our plumber, that the pressure that the water comes into the school varies pretty significantly. And when it comes in too hard, it was somehow, and Michael, you can jump in, because you've been in this conversation as much as I have, that it creates a problem inside and it basically breaks the bubbler, okay, temporarily, because this pressure comes in too hard. So what the gentleman has done is installed, it's some sort of like a backflow preventer. It's something that you can prescribe what you want the pressure of the water to be when it comes in, and it won't... That, that mechanism converts the pressure, so that when it gets to the more sensitive mechanisms in the bubbler, it's not as much of a jolt to it, so to speak.
Pressure-reducing valve.
Press, some sort of a pressure-reducing valve, exactly. So that was done. With the inconsistent pressure, what you sometimes get is when you hit the bar, it starts off as, as low for, you know, I'm gonna say for a few seconds. It's not in a long time. But you will see the water, I can show you, actually, 'cause the ones outside the main office of the middle school, when we go back toward my office area, do this. It takes a couple of seconds for that pressure to build up, and then the water does come out. But it initially, for a couple of seconds, does not...
I mean, we're not blaming you, John. What?
No, no, I know you're not. I'm not, I, but I...
I'm directing this at Gilbey.
I'm just the messenger.
I want you to know that we, I, I was quite honestly, asked Wayne to get our plumber, that we have a contracted service with. I wanted them in here to address, the, the ones I was most concerned were four in the gym area. There were two in the weight room and two in the auxiliary gym.
Well, Main Street, too. I mean, that's what the public is using that.
But that, I, I believe they're all repaired.
Okay.
So it was a problem up until the Christmas vacation week.
I got a report today that...
Yeah, but we can check. But, yeah, I mean, if it is, let me know.
I can instruct that they have to hold the button longer than...
Yeah, but please, you know...
It's a water bubbler. It's a water bubbler.
Right, I mean, they're, they're switching classes. Like, they shouldn't have to worry about the water.
Yeah, that's what Jerry's saying.
They've had them, fuck, when I was in high school, they had water bubbles. You hit the button, the water came out.
Sounds simple, I know.
I mean, it's unbelievable. It really is.
I, honestly, we brought in an independent plumber, because I was just, we weren't getting the results that we wanted from Gilbey.
John, just a couple of...
But if it continues to be a problem, I, I need to know that. But I, there are plenty of people that reported to us, believe me.
John, I may not be able to be at SSBC tomorrow, so there are two things.
Yes.
And you may have them on your list already. Both catch basins near your office on both sides of that island do not work.
Yep.
They puddle, and, and they fixed it, the one in, in front of your, they fixed the one in the parking lot about three times.
It has been three times.
They replaced the trees, and Jerry's mentioned this, too, out front along the hillside. They were really like five or six-foot tall, what'd you call them? Spruce, I don't know.
Like a spruce.
They replaced, replaced them with basically twigs.
Fir tree, yeah.
They're not the same tree. And we either need to get a credit for that or, or something, because...
We had a meeting last week, Mel, and, and basically, as we get ready to try to close out the project, regardless of how we close it out, where there's gonna be retainage. And we've made it clear that in the spring, we're gonna go back out and look at all the landscaping.
Okay.
And all of the drainage issues.
Okay.
And all of the paving issues.
All right.
So that even though we're gonna try to come to a number to close this out potentially, we're gonna retain enough money to cover all of those things. And we're not gonna know, really, till the spring where we stand with the landscaping issues, right?
Correct. It is above thirty percent remaining.
Clearly, it's a design issue with those catch basins. They're just too high.
Yeah.
It's referred to as a monetized punch list.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're gonna hold the money.
And it's always a part of closeout. When you have things, when you need to, you need to close out, but you have things that are hanging on. You put a price tag on them, and then that price is something you withhold back until that item is satisfied.
I just wanna make sure that both those items are on it. That's all.
If the contractor decides that they don't wanna come back for that, there's enough money in that monetized punch list
to hire someone else.
to get everything done by somebody else.
Yeah, well, PMA and DOR would have told us is that we're holding back potentially twice as much sometimes as it might cost to fix some of these things, just so they, you know...
It will happen.
Right, thanks.
You just have to be patient, which none of us are.
Well, patience can only go so far.
Yeah.
None of us are patient.
I'm sorry, is that enough?
That's all, that's all I have, yes.
That's enough. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the naming of a school facility. And we're gonna have a public hearing on this. And it's for this room. Would you like to pick that up?
So I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, what, what you wanna do as a committee is, is open the public hearing and solicit any additional nominations, uh, excuse me, any additional information on the one nomination that has been brought forth with naming the Distance Learning Lab in honor of former Superintendent Dr. David Troughton. And following that, then close the public hearing, and then ultimately take a vote on how you'd like to proceed from that point.
All right. We will now open the public hearing for the naming of this room. The, the name that has been put forth is Dr. David S. Troughton. And I will solicit at this point any comments or input from anyone?
Are we gonna call that the Willis balcony?
Yeah.
Are you proposing that?
Sure, why not?
Oh, gosh.
Seeing that there's no one from the public that...
I'm not hearing any.
Right. I just wanna say that the reason that I support this, among many reasons, is that David was actually the inspiration for this project. He spoke about it for a couple of years, and Jerry and I, I think, initially thought he was crazy. We wa, Jerry and I wanted to, at one point, build a new high school and convert the old high school to the middle school and renovate that. And David stuck with this plan for a joint school with core facilities. And also, he gave us fifteen or sixteen years he dedicated to this community. And I think was a critical element in, in making this one of the top school districts in the state.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I, I echo what, what Mel said. I mean, David, I worked with him for ten years. I know Cliff worked with him. I was a member of the school committee, and certainly Mel did for almost as many years as I did. And David was a workaholic. He put in a lot of time. He, I think, elevated the status of the school district. I think there's other administrators like Dr. O'Donoghue and Bill Butler and people like that, and Charlie Jones, and a number of administrators that have been honored for their service to the North Reading School District. And I think David is right up there at the top of that list. I really do. He was the inspiration for this project. He envisioned this, along with Janine, who was one of the original members of the, uh, the Secondary School Building Committee. And again, we thought it was just too ambitious, Mel and I, but when, when push came to shove, it was the right thing to do. I remember David was the person that went into the school building administration and met with, um...
Catherine Craven?
Catherine Craven, Brad Jones, and, and Bruce Tarr, and, and got this thing kicked off. And then it was picked up by Keith Manville, and then Kathy Willis, and then John. So David, again, I think David's, um, the thing he's probably most remembered for is no student left behind. I mean, he, he made sure that every student was included, and he did a fantastic job while he was here, and I think built the foundation for the school district that we have today. So I'm a hundred percent in favor of this. I know Chuck Karucci from the Secondary School Building Committee made the recommendation. It had been on my mind for some time. I mean, you stay for fifteen years as a superintendent now. That's a long time. So, and David also oversaw the Batch Elder project.
That's right.
At a very controversial time, when we were going back and forth between the Batch Elder and the...
Swan Pond School?
Swan Pond proposition. And David, he, he saw that through as well. He saw it through the renovations of the Hood School and the Little School for that matter. So I'm very enthusiastic about this.
So are you gonna call it the Yukon Dave?
Yukon Dave, Yukon Dave Learning Lab?
Yukon Dave comes from him never canceling school, no matter what the weather was. So...
Any, anything else?
No, I would just...
Well, I'll add my two cents to it. There's, there's two things that are in favor of, of David's name on this room. The first is that he, he didn't go along with the idea of converting the old high school to a middle school.
It sounded like a good idea at the time.
Yeah, at the time was a good idea.
And, and the, the second was, as Jerry said, it was not just a simple meeting of Bruce Tarr and, and Brad Jones and Catherine Craven. It was, uh, David erupted when he found that we were not on the list, and he called those two individuals immediately, and then they called the third individual, and they went and had a sit-down. And it was that dynamic that, that got us put on the list again. He, David looked around, and he said, all these other, all these other schools are being built, and they're all newer by twenty years than our old high school. And it just wasn't right. And he, he exploded when he found that we were being short-changed, and he got action. So I, I think it's very appropriate that we name a piece of this school in his, in his favor. Anything else? No one else? All right, we'll close the hearing. And, uh, we need to vote before we close the hearing.
Yeah.
I think you need to, perhaps vote to submit an article.
I was gonna make a motion to request that Selectmen place an article on the June town meeting warrant to name the Distance Learning Lab, the Middle School, High School Distance, Distance Learning Lab in honor of former Superintendent David S. Troughton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And now we'll close the hearing. All right, and we've done that. The next item on our agenda is a school trip. North Reading High School International Travel Club looking to travel to China in April of two thousand eighteen.
Okay, thank you. We are proposing another international trip, this time to China, for the two thousand eighteen April school vacation. This would be the itinerary. We would leave one of those days for a vacation like we have in the past two or three years. And we'd fly overnight to Beijing. The entire trip is in Beijing, and we would stay there the entire time. So we would get there on the second day, take a, a walking tour of the city, and there was a welcome dinner. And then day three, we had a summer palace. The kids would take a Tai Chi lesson. I'm not sure if I would. We go to the Forbidden City, Tiananmen Square, and a local school, and also then that dinner, Peking Duck dinner that night. Then we go to the Great Wall. We'd actually would go to this section of the Great Wall. This is when I went in November of two thousand fifteen. Uh, and then a tea ceremony and a Kung Fu show. You'd see the Temple of Heaven. We'd go to the Beijing Zoo. And then the Hutong Rikshaw Tour and Dinner with the Hutong Family, something that we found really appealing with this particular trip. So the Hutongs are like small neighborhoods outside of, like, the big city. So it'd basically be going to like the, you know, the real Beijing and, and seeing, um, how everybody else lives, not in like the tourist section of it, and then have a dinner with a family there, which was pretty cool. Then a painting section and like an art zone the next day, and where all the Olympic events took place and some more exploration of the city, and then we would leave on the eighth day. So a lot of this is stuff that I was able to do when I went. So I've seen a lot of these things. You're actually my pictures. And it's all really exciting and really, I think, neat stuff for the kids to be able to see. So the total per-student cost of this trip includes insurance, and that's through EF and also MIAA. And this covers all of this here. So cancellation interruption, illness, accident, their baggage and property, flight delay. And the, the parents and the students have access to an English-speaking representative the entire time. And this also covers the foreign workers' compensation and general liability, which we have for this year's trip to Scandinavia. And then, these are some of the reasons that the International Travel Club has come up with for running these trips. So the, the first one is really the, the biggest one for us. So broadening their world experiences and seeing that there's, um, there's more out there than inside North Reading and even Europe, which is where we've been the past three years. And I think that's all I have.
What's the, do you have a, do you have a cost yet?
This trip would be two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the additional cost would be the, the kids would have to get a visa, um, which I'm not entirely sure on the total cost. You can get a group visa. So they'd have to do some research into that.
What's the cost of this year's trip?
This year's trip is thirty-four hundred dollars.
Okay.
This would be the che, uh, the least expensive trip that I've personally run in the past four years.
One of the, we've had a little bit of discussion about this. One of the concerns that I have, and I think other committee, committee members were wondering about is a seven-days-for-China trip doesn't seem like enough time. I mean, the flight, isn't the flight twenty hours each way?
The flight was, uh, it's fourteen hours.
Fourteen hours?
So I went for three days to China, which was awful. So seven days sounds like an eternity, which would be nice. Um, I think what's nice about this trip is you're, you're focused in, you stay at one hotel, and you're there, and everything sort of branches off from that, that day. So there's not a lot of travel. I think the longest time you're moving would be to go to the Great Wall, which is like an hour and a half or two hours outside of the city. So there's, um, really the entire time, so the entire time you're there, it's just seeing Beijing. It's not moving from place to place, or sitting in a bus, or subway, that sort of thing.
Could I?
Another question.
I just, Evan, maybe for clarification, the exact dates. So the, the school vacation week is the week of April sixteenth? That's a Monday to a Friday?
Uh, it would probably, we, we tend to try to leave that Thursday night, so we can come home on a Saturday.
Okay. So we're thinking a departure...
They would miss that Friday school day?
Yep.
That's been typical, right. So you, you're thinking leaving on Thursday, the twelfth, returning on Saturday, the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So it's actually a nine-day trip. I mean, it's two days...
Two days and, yeah.
Seven days.
Yeah.
Another concern, and this, you know, I favor these kinds of trips. One of the issues, and this is an issue not with you or the trip, it's, I think, a discussion that we have to have with Mr. Bernard in the administration, is that there's been some conflicting information in terms of what school committees have to approve and not approve. And we've, I think we've talked about, I think we've talked about this before. And the Ma, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees recommends that we don't approve trips that are vendor-sponsored.
Okay.
But that we do approve trips, if, if Evan was doing this whole thing himself and was setting up the hotel and, um, that we do approve those. I, I don't understand the reasoning.
Right.
But Julie actually checked today, and I was, I actually was concerned about the same thing. I don't know if we should be approving, not saying they can't have the trips, but what the, what MASK says is vendor-based trips are those where third-party packages, tours of an educational nature, where the district's choices of, of providers and itineraries are restricted, and district staff are essentially recruiters for the third party. We would advise school committees to avoid any action regarding vendor-based trips, leaving the decision to participate with the students and their parents.
Meaning you don't need our approval?
You don't need our approval.
For the trip to happen?
Right, so that's why I'm wondering if...
But I think the school committee, under your policy, for an overnight or out-of-state trip, the school committee has its own policy for travel.
Right, but this kind of override, MASK kind of saying this overrides that policy, because it's not a school trip. You know, I, I know it sounds a little crazy, but...
I, I mean, I, I think it is a school trip. I don't know how it's not a school trip.
We're not sponsoring it.
It's that school-based trips are those that are sponsored by the district, and all arrangements are handled by members of the district staff. The district has complete control over transportation providers, hotels, itineraries, and guide tour staff. These trips require adherence to district policies and school rules, as well as school committee approval. The administration should ensure that the district's liability insurance provides protection to the district.
We, we had an extent, we had an extended insure, this is gonna be the, if this trip goes forward, this would be the third time?
The second time, the second, with the extra insurance.
We did last...
Oh, last year's too, yeah, it would be the third.
The trip coming up, and then this would be the third one. We, we have an additional insurance.
But I'm not saying I oppose the trip, or...
No, I understand.
Right, right.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we, as a committee, should be voting on these when our, the association that represents us is telling us we shouldn't be voting on these trips, and that we don't have to vote on these trips.
Okay.
That's, that's the interpretation we've gotten out of Mike Gilbert.
Right.
He's, he's, not just us, but all of the districts. It's come up several times, probably half a dozen times in the last two or three years. And each time, the answer comes back by, from Mike Gilbert, that we should not be doing this. We should not be approving that trip.
Why, why not?
Because...
I think it relates to some, I think it relates to some liability issues.
We lack, we lack control over it.
Yeah, we aren't controlled. So the, the schools...
We're controlling, we're arranging.
No, we're not. It's a travel, private company that's set up.
Package.
Yeah.
And basically, it's like a, it's a contract from the parents and the students with EF.
Right.
Right?
Not with us.
They don't have to sign a North Reading school's contract to let them go. They're signing a contract with EF.
But I guess the...
Yeah, they do.
They sign a consent and...
Yeah, they sent a consent and release form that's the district's form.
Isn't that a, isn't that a more, isn't that a safer, more responsible...
I think that's how I'm seeing it, yeah, that's...
As opposed to having us, what trip do we set up? I mean, what about the Washington DC trip? How do we run that?
That's a vendor.
That's a, you know, they all...
I, I think, yeah, and I'm not arguing the, but all communities are using, I mean, a vendor.
I guess I'm, I'm just saying, I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight based on the rec, based on the information recommendation we've gotten from MASC.
Okay.
That we can go forward with the trip. I, I would like a, just a clarification as to why, why they're recommending we don't vote on it.
That's what I'm looking for. That, that's exactly what I'm looking for. Why do you make this recommendation? How else are you supposed to do it? We approve the Washington DC trip every year from the last time out, and that's a vendor-sponsored trip, I think.
But that's during school time? Is it, is that...
To, to the extent that there's a, I mean, whether it's during or day. There's at least one school day involved.
Correct.
One day.
I mean, I just, I have no idea what the purpose is.
What is our policy? How does our policy read? Do you have any...
For out-of-state travel?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, if you give me a minute? Yeah, it's, it's for overnight or out-of-state, or there's, I think, also a mileage restriction, but I, I can, I can find it. It's just, it might just take a minute. I will just add, as I'm looking for this, that, you know, when we, when we looked into the issue of the additional insurance, we had our, the, the committee's legal counsel...
We did, yeah.
Provide the advice on that. I mean, we were pretty specific a couple of years ago with, with why we were asking.
Yeah, I'm reading, um...
I didn't receive any conflicting information there, just, you know, again, just for information.
Right. I'm looking at our legal opinion about a little over a year ago, but he didn't, they didn't particularly comment on the issue around a school committee approving the trip. He was more looking at the insurance piece and any ethical, you know, violations, which he found that would be none of using a third party.
Again, I'm not trying to put Evan in the middle.
Oh, sure.
I'm just, when I saw, I remember this coming up, and then...
And that's why, you know, I inquired today...
Right.
What other districts have done, and his response was, you should not be doing this. So...
Right. So that, like, I wanna, I wanna find out, we didn't, this came late in the day, so I didn't find out why. I don't wanna stop you from, I mean, you can continue to move forward with the trip, because the way this reads is that it's between the... because the way this reads is that it's between the parents and the student and the staff, that's...
And, and I think someone responded, someone on the South Shore said, based on this recommendation, they had to change their policy. So maybe that's something that we need to look...
I have your policy here, which was updated in 2013. So there's several policies around student travel. The foreign travel policy reads that the North Reading School Committee recognizes the value of foreign travel for high school students and will permit reputable firms and agencies to bring economy travel plans to the attention of students. The school committee will not endorse, sponsor, or assume responsibility for any travel plan, but will permit advertising for travel purposes within its already established policies for distribution of information within the system. Teachers who are asked by firms or agencies to service prospective chaperones and guides for financial or other in-kind gain are expected to act with discretion and ethical concern.
That, that doesn't address that they need our permission?
It, it does not, it says you will not endorse, sponsor, or assume. But if you go to late night, overnight student travel, it reads that the school committee recognizes the value of student participation in field trips and excursions. At the same time, participation in certain field trips and excursions will require late night, midnight to 6:00 AM, or overnight travel. Accordingly, in an effort to provide a safe travel condition and arrangements, the school committee must approve all trips that involve late night travel or overnight stays. Initial approval should be secured before any fundraising to subsidize the trip begins, and the committee will only approve school sponsored trips. Cost of school sanctioned trips should be weighed against their educational merits before approval is provided. Students and parents should be made aware of financial aid options at the time of fundraising beginning. The committee further requests that the final approval be sought no less than 30 days prior to the scheduled trip dates, and final approval be received no less than 10 days prior to such trip. The school will provide alternative learning activities for any students who do not participate in this field, in a field trip. A general field trip guideline applies to all trips that involve late night or overnight stays. And then there's a very lengthy policy on late night, overnight student travel regarding transportation and, and approval. It's very lengthy, I mean, I'm certainly willing to read it if you want, but, okay.
Not specifically addressing vacation weeks.
Not specifically, uh, addressing vacation, that's correct.
I mean, it does say late night travel, this, this isn't a field, this is a optional...
This is travel.
Right. This is, this is covered under the foreign travel policy. I happen to have also been to China. I've spent eight weeks in mainland, in various cities. More than that in one place in Beijing. And I, I just don't quite picture how there's a, this is a good value, getting a return on $2,900 for that shorter period of time. The places that are there that you're gonna see are, are places that will be there for a very long time. Some thousand people in the Forbidden City with paintbrushes. Re, redoing all of the thing on a continuing basis, just going around and around. Same thing as all of these wonderful old places. But those will be here, be around and available when the, the kids are old enough to go and spend two or three weeks in China and see something more than just a short part of Beijing. Because they, that is a very short piece of Beijing. So that's my, my feeling.
Again, I support the trip. I, I just don't know if I want to vote on it tonight based on what we've been told by the MAS Association of Schools.
I understand, okay.
And I don't, but I don't want to slow Evan down, I mean, we're not saying you can't do the trip, we're just wondering if we have to vote on it. Yeah.
Whether or not there needs to be a vote.
Right.
I think it was coming down to whether or not the sponsors of this trip are... It says here, we're here to hand out the MAS category. But it talks about the district's choices of providers and it appears here that district staff are essentially recruiters for the third party. So I think that may be a concern, that we use the school district staff to recruit students to contract with this provider for these types of trips. I don't know if I'd look at that as kind of a, not with a, that's a...
I, I don't think so.
I don't think we're doing that.
No, it's not necessarily that we shouldn't approve it, it's just that we're take, we're not making a yes or no. The trip can happen, it just doesn't...
And we're making it a school sponsored trip.
But, but again, I think it starts with, with every trip we approve.
Right, but, but recently this came up, I'm just saying recently.
Yeah, I think it, I think it comes down to, 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 the rationale I read, from what I've read, is that it comes down to control. And I think if, if the third party is controlling where the hotel accommodations get made, how the transportation gets arranged, then is the district, you know, not making, having control over those accommodations, then perhaps, you know, it, it, it's not, you know, it doesn't warrant a school committee vote, is, I think that's what Mike Gilbert is saying.
I think it's what he is.
Yeah, it's a little...
I'd just like to get there, because I'm like, we should approve that, so. I agree with, no, we don't have to vote on it, tonight, we can get a clarification.
But again, I, they can go forward with the trip, we're not saying you can't go forward with the trip.
I'm, I'm sensing that you might like to have some additional information before...
Yes.
We say go forward with the trip, that's, that's what I'm sensing.
So are we giving up authority over all school trips, now the DC trip?
Any trip, yeah, any trip that...
But we're not going to approve the DC trip, that's what I'm...
Any trip that, well, the DC trip is during school time.
So is this trip?
One day.
I mean, is it simple, just you don't take over?
We, we did, we did approve the trip, that DC trip already. For the, we did, for this coming year.
Right, but that's because it's taking place over school time. I mean...
Where are you getting that distinction from? I mean, who, who says whether it's on school time or not, I don't see the distinction here at all. It seems to be over who's...
I guess I'm looking at our policy more so, our district...
Well, how about if I was to do this? How is, how about if I was to share the Mike Gilbert opinion with our, your attorney, and ask him for an interpretation of whether or not, what the school committee's action should be? And hopefully I can do that by the January 23rd meeting. And either there'll be a decision of that you don't take any action and the trip just goes forward. I would think you would be able to do something like that.
And I did get some word, again, from someone on the South Shore, who said they had to revisit their policies to reflect this information. So maybe that's something that we have to plan for.
Maybe you can get a copy of their policy.
She's sending it to me.
I wish we could have gotten this tonight before Evan came in, but we don't get our agenda till late Friday afternoon, and...
I'm always available before a school committee...
No, no, but I mean, no, but I'm saying there's no way, it's on the agenda, and, you know, again, I support the trip itself. It's just the issue of whether the school committee...
Is there anything that restricts you from, if we don't take this up for a couple more weeks? You know, you don't need, it doesn't, there's no cost benefit to...
The price goes up like every few weeks, but I don't think it's, we have a quote, so I think that's, that would stand for the first, first bit of it.
Our goal, if we vote on it, would be at our next, it would be our next...
January 23rd.
Yeah, it wouldn't go up until then, yeah.
All right, you wouldn't need to come back.
Okay.
Okay, why don't, is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman? Would you like to?
Sounds like a good idea, all right.
Cliff? Got a question in the audience.
Yes.
One question for the, about the trip. You mentioned that the visa would be additional cost for the students. Will the company be helping people to apply for the visa? Because China is in part of these program, and I know through work, and I know work with visas are very different than, you know, physical visa is different than a tourist visa. But are, if there are any concerns about getting, and I know a lot of them have to be applied for, well, and then, and if that's a problem with the administration, could be changes to, so is there, is there any assistance provided to students?
I'm, I'm not sure about that, I went through an agency and I did mine, and I, I got it in three weeks. And that was a year and a half ago.
I just want to make sure that students would know, because we use agencies a lot as well for our clients, but if people don't know that they're trying to do it on their own, that you can run into problems with the visa. But I just want to make sure it's not, it's not a thought of, if students did want to...
Yep. Yeah, we have a lot, we have a lot of meetings with the kids and their parents.
Considering it's spring of 2018, it would seem like that could work, be worked out in that period of time.
So then, Mr. Chair, I recommend we just hold this until our next meeting and make a decision.
Hopefully have an answer for that meeting.
Right, have an answer from our council, and if we don't need to take a vote, you can just go forward either way, and if we need to take a vote, we'll take a vote on that night.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Evan.
Okay, next item on our agenda is new academic courses at North Reading High School. Let's go through it. Thank you. I'm going to just transition off of the China slideshow, if I could, please?
We're gonna use the new projector.
That looks good.
Much better. Oh, look at that.
Oh, here we go.
That's beautiful.
So I'm happy to present tonight four new courses that I'd like to put in the 1718 program of study. And I believe you have the courses in a course description in your packet. The, the first course is Robotics Academy. This is an academic level course, and one that is, let's just say profoundly project based. It's an exciting opportunity, I think. We've got, as you know, from the, from the middle school curriculum, they've got a robotics class that the students rotate through, and they have that portion of a course like this through their, throughout their experience in, in eighth grade. And up until essentially this time, hopefully, not anymore, they would have an opportunity to expand that once they got to the high school. The Robotics Academy would be a sophomore, junior, senior elective, and one that I think would start to really shape a pathway for, you know, more, more developed and more enhanced computer science, computer programming, coding type, like coding type track. It is in the NIPS 2021 document, and it's something that I think we, we see as a real hands-on interdisciplinary digital learning type course. Infuses technology into the curriculum, and, and one that I sincerely hope you recognize as important and integral to a, to a rigorous and relevant curriculum at the high school. I guess I'll take questions kind of at the end, I'll just kind of go through them if that works for you, and then we'll maybe just deal with questions at the end. The second course, Modern History Through Film, another academic level course, this would be a senior elective. In, I'll, I'll get to this little, this moment, in a moment. This is a course that students have typically demonstrated a high level interest in, in some form, even though it hasn't really kind of obviously been presented into the program of study yet. But every year, there's students that will talk about, when can we get some kind of a theater, a, a movie club, or a discussion, discussion group around certain movies and certain films and, and things like that? So it's always kind of on the student's mind, this idea, I think, as we all see it as, as a, this kind of a medium, film in society, and the opportunities to really dissect it, talk about films, talk about what they mean, but in a historical context. The, the, the course has a huge opportunity, huge upside of 20th century skills, synthesis, evaluation, critical thinking. And, you know, as the course was presented, presented to me by Mr. Osteen, who is the social studies curriculum specialist, he had, if I can say, very eloquently stated that the course will enable students to more clearly see both the events of the past and the differences in the ways that we tell these stories over time. This awareness of how popular conceptions of the past change over time will give students a greater sense of their own place within the historical narrative, and how storylines affect our communal self conception and even influence the collective decisions that we make. In this way, a history through film course will touch on some of the elements of a good historiography course at the college level. And I think he's absolutely dead on. I think it's a great idea as a senior elective. And, again, the, the breadth that a course like this would offer for students to study is a very exciting one, and I think that one we'll see a lot of interest in. The next two courses are honors level courses, and, you know, I think what, I, I hope you'll agree with me that when we look at electives in the science department, science, technology, and engineering department, we're always trying to find kind of a, a way to build a better master. Because there's so many areas in the science curriculum that we're, we're, we're looking to offer, again, breadth and depth, but in a, in the most effective way. And one of those is to take the genetics class and combine it with the bioethics class, or that portion of the bioethics class that, that we had called bioethics and fauna. And there was this zoology piece that we never wanted to lose, that we had linked to bioethics. And the genetics piece, that is its own course, and one that's very popular. And, and, you know, serves a, an opportunity for students on a pathway to explore biology and other life sciences. So by looking at the components of the three courses, and as I introduced this fourth course, the anatomy and physiology piece, in discussions with guidance, in discussions with the science department, discussions with the curriculum specialist leaders and, in the curriculum specialist leader, in the science department, we looked at the kind of the pieces of this, of this jigsaw puzzle. And the anatomy and physiology class, which is a very popular class, at an academic level course, and said, well, what if we took the zoology piece and put that into our anatomy and physiology course? And thus added another layer of, of, of curriculum to that course, raising that to a, to an honors level caliber, thus comparative anatomy and physiology. We don't lose the zoology, the zoology piece. But then we take the bioethics piece and combine that with the genetics, and we see a kind of a, a easier mesh of those two topics. We're still gonna offer the anatomy and physiology as an academic level course, but again, with this, with this zoology piece and this comparative anatomy piece, I think it's one that's really going to allow students options, students that have a, a life science interest, to take anatomy and physiology, or again, the comparative, that's that course plus the zoology piece. And as I said earlier, kind of the smoother, I think, combination of the genetics and bioethics. So these would be the two honors courses that would round out our four new courses, and these two obviously in the science department. Questions?
Any questions? These, these replace other courses, or these are placed in the course book in addition in the two other courses? And then we give the courses that get enough students to enroll in the courses?
So, okay, I think, so it was your first question, do these replace courses in the, in the...
Right, will be, some courses dropped in order to add these.
Well, yeah, so, so bioethics and fauna.
Right.
Right, is now kind of in, in split this way.
Right, but what about the, the movie, the, the, um...
Modern History Through Film.
That's new.
That's a new course.
But does that mean, is that under the, what department is that under, language department?
That's under the social studies department.
Okay, so do we drop a social studies course and add this in?
No, no, this, this is an additional course offer.
Okay, but, I mean, if we don't add new staff, then if we have this course, and the staffer, the teacher teaching this course can't teach another course they might teach. I'm trying, I'm just trying to get my hands on it.
The course would only run if a number, if enough students signed up for it, which is true of any course.
Right, but what I'm saying is if, so you said you had Mr. Osteen for this class, right?
No, Mr. Osteen is the curriculum specialist who, who proposed the course to me.
But say, just say he's the teacher that teaches this class.
Yep.
Then he can't teach a section of something else, because I'm assuming as a teacher, the teachers have, are teaching the maximum number of classes they can teach. So can we offer these courses without adding staff is where I'm going.
Well, with the elective, with the elective kind of signup process, we might see, you might, instead of, instead of, let's say,
Economics.
Forty-two kids taking sports marketing.
Right.
Right? Twenty of those kids might say, you know what, I'm going to take this class. And now you've just replaced one section for the other. And we're not necessarily saying something's not going to run. We're going to look at the numbers and the popularity and...
But we're not requesting any new staff for these courses specifically?
There's no, there are no, there are no new staff requests.
Specifically for these courses, okay.
We'll be requesting additional staff, just in a general way, not as a...
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And I know, like, we've had that discussion about class size at the high school. And I think we want to be aware of making sure those core required classes are within a teachable range.
Absolutely.
You know, as much as we want to expand and in my opinion, look very much like a private school. Because, I mean, I don't consider a lot of these public-school-like classes, but I think they'll be great. I want to be sure that our core academic class size is manageable. I don't want to lose out on that.
Right.
But I think this comes down to choices. I mean, obviously, if one class fills and another one only has seven or eight students, you're not going to run the one with seven or eight students, so...
That's right.
I mean, that was a question that was raised last year when we were talking about class size. Like, is there a minimum? There isn't a minimum. So what is that? You know, what is the minimum that you look for to run a class? Because last year, it wasn't, at least for me, it wasn't clear that there was a minimum.
Is there a minimum? I think depending on the course.
That's right.
And depending on the, let's just say, the courses that we offer that might, you know, support that course or the pathway that that course is a part of, I think plays a role in that. And it's, yeah, I mean, it'd be very difficult to offer a class that has six kids in it or three kids in it because we're doing this, we don't have the manpower to do that. I understand that, absolutely.
Particularly if you're going to run the risk of inflating another class, that's...
Yeah, I mean, even fifteen kids. I think if, you know, fifteen kids in an elective class, but you have thirty-four kids in a core required class, that's not okay.
That shouldn't happen. That wouldn't happen, right.
But we're up to thirty now in some of those academics.
In electives.
In electives.
Not at any of the core classes?
You would have it in some, yeah. But the kids have to have a classes, so they have to be in a class.
Sure.
And they're all going to be core courses. So whether they're, if they're taking this course or they're taking some other elective, those core numbers are going to stay the same. They're still going to be at twenty-eight or twenty-six, whatever that number might be. But you would not, I think, what we would want to say to you, and Adrian, I don't want to speak for you, but we wouldn't be negatively impacting the student-teacher ratio in a core course simply because we want to run an elective.
Right.
But once you get beyond the four or five required core courses, the students are in three or four electives anyway.
Sure.
Where they are is almost irrelevant.
I mean, that's why kids, I assume, have to rank their choices.
That's correct.
Yes.
So you can, you have that flexibility.
On their signup sheet, so that if they don't get a class that they wanted because it either doesn't run or because it's maxed out, because we're only running one section, they list their alternative couple of courses that they would want as a backup. And that sometimes happens.
And I would say that if something like Modern History Through Film, all of a sudden, showed a dramatic popularity with our senior students, we would limit it to one section. I think it's a class that probably...
That happens too, yeah.
Okay, great.
We tell students very, you know, clearly that if you're putting this on your course request list, make sure you're adding additional courses.
Mic is capped.
Sure, great.
Other questions? I have a question on the robotics.
Yes.
It's academic. Why is it academic and not...
Well, I...
This is, it seems to me that, you know, as a technical person, when I read through this, I'm looking at something that could very easily be...
It's about accessibility, I think. I, we talked about this, myself and Mr. Downs and Dr. Downs and Mr. Rosa. And we wanted to make sure that we, with this type of area of science, that we didn't create a situation for students to feel like they weren't going to be, it wasn't going to be open for them. I'm really interested in this, but I'm not sure I want to take an honors-level class. I think as a sophomore elective that I can take it and get excited as a sophomore into this and then that gets me on the path and gets me on this pathway to take AP Computer Science or down the road, another kind of technology-based course that to kind of front-load it with the honors was, I think, just a little too restrictive. And we wanted to make sure it was, the students felt like they could succeed in this class and it would be accessible for them, regardless of kind of where they saw themselves along the pathway. If every student comes out of the eighth grade taking some robotics, I don't, I don't like the idea of setting up a situation where somebody really, you know, found that to be their passion, but then felt like, but it's an honors-level class, I'm not sure I'm going to succeed in there. And I want them to feel excited about the course and not feel like the honors label there is something that's going to turn them away and kind of impact their passion for that.
But on the other hand, if someone is interested in only the honors-level courses and you have it as an academic, then that's a negative for them.
Right.
As far as that classroom...
Well, I would prefer that the students be driven by the content in the curriculum, not the level of the curriculum.
But our high achievers are high achievers.
I'd say all of that were true.
Well, let's, I'll put that passionate, I'll put that passionate adjective above that, too. And hopefully that the passion around the course would...
They don't always think of things in an adult manner where...
They're worried about GPA.
Exactly.
Well, again, this is about accessibility.
I was going to say, we've been through this exercise with academic before, way before your time.
GPA seems to have faded a little bit now as far as being a percentage right as opposed to...
This is about getting students excited for the coursework and the content.
And it's also infancy, you know, it's early in the, this is really a very new area for us.
So is this the first robotics course that we offer at the high school?
This would be the first robotics course in the high school.
So I think that's important to recognize that, you know, there are a lot of, I mean, they even have some sort of programming in the seventh grade and some, you know, tech ed. So, I mean, they're pre-exposed to all these things. I think we have to offer this at the high school.
Well, that's it. I would, that's why, that's why I'm here, yeah.
Yeah.
One thing I would suggest, though, is that if it's successful this year as an academic course, that we seriously look at offering both, we could offer both an academics and an honors level possibly moving forward. We can do that, correct?
I think that's certainly worth the discussion. But like I said, in conversation with Dr. Downs as the coordinator of digital learning, I think he's, he's got some very interesting and appealing ideas, kind of a game, gaming and game development and other type of technology-based courses that might fit along this pathway that maybe then are the honors level. I think I stand, there's a, yeah, I mean, I'm very impressed by the idea that if I'm a freshman and I come in and I really have one elective and this is a passion for me, I can take web design and web development, start to get into that coding piece and how webpage development, webpage design works and expand on the building blocks that I took out of the middle school. And then as a sophomore, I'm into this robotics academy and to start to, again, get further along that pathway, get myself into that computer programming and AP Computer Science and that type of thing. I just feel like putting an honors-level expectation on it and then creating a curriculum that's, I was going to say, you need to be here to succeed in this right now as the first-year course that we offer. I just feel it's too restrictive, but I'm not, I'm not... That's why I think we're all on the same agreement, let's offer it at an academic level.
Anybody else? So we, there's no further discussion? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd move to approve the four course offerings presented by the high school principal.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thanks. Thank you. Very excited.
Excellent job.
Good choices there.
Yeah.
Call North Shore Press right now.
I think it's, I think it's great that we're embarking on support for our town industry, manufacturing robots.
Did you see Sixty Minutes last night?
No.
That's what it was about, drones and robots.
Don't watch news shows anymore.
Be careful going out of here if there's a robot at the door.
They're creating these robots that can do literally in combat, in battle. Send them out there and they can hit a target or a person by face recognition.
The ones that the company in Massachusetts is making, they're unbelievable, the stuff they can do. It's scary.
Just make sure that nobody can hack them.
I know.
Because they work all the way. All right, the next item on our agenda is the end-of-year fiscal year report, the town and school department agreement. And Mr. Connelly, you want to talk about that?
Yes, thank you. So as we know, the end-of-the-year financial report is a financial report that gets completed annually. It's a requirement due by September thirtieth at the end of every fiscal year. On that report, that also, not only does it encompass school expenses and revenue data, it also encompasses town expenditures not included in the school appropriation. And there is a requirement that there should be a written methodology approved by both the Board of Selectment and School Committee at how those town expenditures contributed to the schools are recorded and reported on this end-of-the-year fiscal report. So it's a bit of a housekeeping issue during the last audit round. This is a report that's also audited by an outside audit firm on an annual basis. The last time this report was signed and approved by both boards was 2010. And the auditor did make a recommendation last spring that this report be reviewed and updated as necessary on the last audit report. So both Ms. Rourke, the town finance director, and myself met over the summer in this past fall. And we did go through the language in the report and we made the appropriate updates to the language. I think it's fair to state that there was nothing really significant that we changed based on the language that won't change any of the reporting numbers financially in any significant manner. It was mostly updating and encompassing what has been happening really over the last six years. There was minor updates that we did make. This was a report, the Board of Selectmen has already reviewed and there was a short presentation at the last Board of Selectmen meeting last week. And they did approve, and as you can see, Mr. Musseri's signature as the chair is already on the document that was included in your packet this evening. So I'm certainly taking any questions, but I'm looking for the same kind of vote of approval so we can move forward and complete the report as needed. Any questions?
So this won't result in any dollar changes in terms of...
It will not, no. So, I mean, everything that we, this is actually all a practice that Liz and I have been going through anyway in terms of how we report, you know, the retirement and the insurances and the debt service and all those expenditures that contributed to the schools. So, you know, it shouldn't impact any of the numbers in any significant way.
The point of this is to obtain a more accurate and accurate per pupil spending cost for the state.
Correct, yep.
Uniformly consistent, I take it?
Yep, correct. And, you know, I think there was some very minor, you know, housekeeping changes. There was some old language of things that we hadn't done it that way in a number of years for a variety of reasons. And we just, we made some updates to that language.
Any further? I have one comment. There's a W between Clifford and Bowles.
Clifford W.
Sorry, on what?
His middle name.
I don't want to get confused with the other names.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, sure. I can make that change.
I take it that isn't something that's critical to get signed today?
No, we'd be looking to get this signed certainly before this, you know, this spring, the next time the auditors will arrive.
Next time I'm in the office.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we have routine matters and minutes of December twelfth, open session.
I move to approve the minutes for open session on December twelfth.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. No budget update or staffing, kids and donations. I have a number. Someone like to make a motion to accept the donation from the Hall of Fame committee?
Make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a $300 donation from the North Reading High School Hall of Fame Association to benefit the high school boys' soccer program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Julie, you want to just go through these one at a time?
Make a motion that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude an artificial Christmas tree valued at $350 from an anonymous donor to the theater programs at the North Reading Middle School, High School.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion, the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an $800 donation from the Meany family in memory of Larry Meany, a longtime North Reading resident, who attended many North Reading athletic events to support costs associated with upgrades to the North Reading High School's athletic fields, including the sod and irrigation project.
Second. Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. If I could, just on the Meany family donation, Larry Meany, I've become pretty good friends with John Meany. Larry's one of Larry's sons and John and I attend a lot of games together. And Larry used to be there all the time watching John's son, Jack, play. John's wife was a teacher in the system at the middle school. She now teaches in Linfield. And John was really happy to present this donation in memory of his father. He's a great guy and it's a really good family. John and his brothers were big-time athletes at North Reading High School. The family grew up here. So much gratitude to the Meany family for this generous donation.
If I could, Mr. Bowles, just add too, that, and all what you said is great now. And Larry Meany, oh, about a year, year and a half or so ago when we moved into the, shortly after we moved into the new high school, also donated the American flag.
Oh, that's right.
That hangs in the gym. So he was a very nice, kind supporter of the school.
Yep.
A nice man. It's a nice way to honor him with his family's donation tonight.
Yep.
Good.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude $800 from the North Reading High School Hall of Fame Association to be used by each elementary school and middle school to purchase new fitness equipment as posted above.
Second. Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a $3,300 donation from the class of 2016 for the purpose of purchasing a welcome sign for the North Reading High School.
Second. Made and seconded.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if I could just add a bit of information on this. So the high school administration and Mr. Connelly have been working with the class of 2016, but also with some available funds that may be in accounts for prior classes that had not, that had made donations of gifts that haven't materialized. And we're working to try to come up with enough money to replace the, I'll call it the marquee or the display sign that's down at Park Street now, kind of with the letters, with something more modern. So while this says a welcome sign, the idea of perhaps a message board-type sign with like a digital display, the ability to show pictures, I mean, there's a lot of work that's...
That'd be nice.
Going to need to be done. I mean, I've been meeting with the assistant principal at the high school, Mr. Downs, about getting the building inspector involved, something that might be a little bit higher.
I was going to say, so you can see it.
The fence line, so...
Exactly.
There's a lot of pluses to taking advantage of that site where there's already a concrete footing, there's electrical power there. So while it says welcome sign, it may not be a welcome sign only. It might be something that has a more useful purpose. So it's something that's probably not going to happen very soon, but it's in the works and it could be a nice addition to...
So this is a, this is a donation toward that purchase?
This is, their class gift is a donation toward that. And I think I feel confident in saying... in saying that the, that the class officers from that class I could work with to, you know, maybe extend the idea to something that, like what I'm just describing to you now, that we could digitally remotely control and be more useful and replace what has been a good sign down there, but it's, it's probably sixteen years old now.
You mean, so AJ doesn't have to walk out through the snow with?
Literally.
Doctor Downs to change the letters.
Absolutely. That's, that's, that's a benefit.
Exactly. It doesn't get changed a lot.
Just a little bit of additional information.
Yeah, it doesn't get changed a lot. We have a lot of snow in the winter.
Or, yeah, where we put a long range message in case.
Exactly.
Because you can't get added after a while if there's a lot of snows. Just a little bit of an information for you and the community on what might be coming.
Sounds like a, a good use of.
It could be a nice addition.
We have it made and, made and seconded to a three thousand dollar donation from the class of two thousand and sixteen for support of a sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Subcommittee updates. Finance planning team met on the sixteenth and January sixth. And. Mr. Benesea, you want to take that?
Sure. Finance planning team, as Cliff said, met last Friday, or last Thursday, whatever it was. And we talked a lot about the available revenues for FY eighteen, and it's not a good story. The available revenues for the school department are approximately, I think, about a couple hundred thousand dollars more than they were for this fiscal year.
Less than one percent, correct?
It's less than one percent. It's point, it's eight tenths of one percent increase, about eight tenths of one percent increase in available revenues, which based on our initial projected budget leaves us in excess of a million dollar shot of a level services budget, never mind our budget that we'd like to see incorporate in RPS twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, which is, leaves us about a million nine hundred thousand dollar shot. So, we tried to go through the revenue figures, and Ms. Rourke and Mr. Gilberto explained to us what the factors were. I think the, probably the biggest factor, and this is no news to anybody, and it hasn't changed much over the years, is the increase in healthcare costs, which they project to be about seven point five percent for the coming fiscal year. They are still working, I think, with their advisors and their consultants on the best way to go with the health insurance. But that seven point five percent equates to about a fifty thousand dollar increase, I think, per percentage point.
Per percent, yep.
So, that's about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars right there.
I think there's talk of requests for proposals going out in February.
Right, right. So, again, it wasn't very promising. They seemed pretty sure of their revenue figures, and so we've got some work to do with trying to figure out what the final revenue figures will be. They don't project any further state aid, Mike, right? They were looking at pretty much a level funding for that.
Yeah, just a slight minimum pure pupil increase.
Yeah, I can see us getting another fifty, sixty thousand, a twenty-five dollar minimum per student, basically.
But, you know, and I, again, I, you know, I asked them, I said, with two and a half and new growth and all that, how are we, how are we basically getting point eight percent? And I think the best explanation I got was the health insurance increased costs. So, the other thing we talked about was the Berry property deal. That looks like it's, they've got a proposal. They voted to accept the proposal. I think it's a thirty million dollar offer to purchase the Berry property for the purpose of construction, constructing over fifty-five residential units.
It's a cash offer, too.
It's a cash offer. I think the percentage of, I think the town's going to realize, what, eighteen million dollars?
And I think, I think it's like, last I heard was nineteen point five, but.
It's in that range.
Right.
They plan on having a town meeting sometime early in March to get the town's approval for the, for the deal. And I want to take this opportunity to congratulate the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator for this deal. I mean, they, this was a really, I know they all worked on it together, I think, Mike Prisco.
The Economic Development Committee, and also the CPC was, was involved, too.
Right, they're all involved, yeah. So, this looks like a real windfall for the community. It was unclear at this point in time how we're going to use the money. I think there would be a conservative approach probably by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, but we did talk about various possibilities with that money, but I think it's very premature at this point in time.
The one positive thing to me about the deal, one, I think they have to get it completed by the end of this year in order to get the nineteen point five million, and it's going to move ahead pretty quickly. But since it's a fifty-five and older project, the project itself won't have an impact on the school population. The concern, I think, is if people from town sell their houses and move into those condos, and then more families move in.
I've heard some concerns, public safety concerns as far as.
Right, awesome, right.
Not that there'll be problems there.
Exactly, but it'd be such a big, right.
Right, that they'd have to fire.
You'd have two really big developments on that side of town with Edgewood and this new development.
But it's really moving forward, and it, I think, I'd be shocked if town meeting didn't approve.
The company building this is the same company that built the Reading Woods project, Pulte. So, it's a, it's a really.
Good reputation.
Yeah, high quality company, international builders.
One other feature of it which you didn't mention, you mentioned the, the capital increase.
Oh, right.
We get, but from a, from a tax standpoint, you're looking at roughly, I think they said three million dollars a year.
Right.
After, you know, the project.
Once they're all built.
It's going to be phased, by the way.
Right.
The plan right now is to phase it. So, I think over four, four phases, so.
Right, if they build it all, it would be a three million plus a year tax windfall.
And of course, we'd be entitled to sixty-six percent of that, no matter what. So, that's, we're looking at trying to get through a budget.
Which would solve a problem. The, the other, I forget what I was, what I had on my mind, I just had something else in there.
The other thing we discussed, too, was the, again, the bathroom project, which I know Mel will talk to in a little while. But basically, it seems like they've committed a made a commitment of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash towards that project. Anything above and beyond that, I'm assuming we're going to have to bond it or do something else.
Request bonding.
And what else was there? Anything else?
I think those are the principal.
We talked a little bit about the school building project, but that's pretty much wrapping up.
Little school will close out, but that's gone well.
So, that was, that was what we talked about. It wasn't a lot of good budget news other than the Berry.
Yeah.
Deal.
Oh, it's lost, didn't come back.
The, the other, next item on our agenda here is the Secondary School Building Committee met on the thirteenth, and there were three of us at that. Ms. Embriano, would you like to report on that?
No, I must say.
You don't want to?
I think we.
Basically, basically, what we've concluded, we're going to do is to, to try to reach a final number with, with Gilbane, and within that have a monetized punch list and, and holdbacks that will cover on items that are agreed to be in the project that we, we can arrive at a price for, but won't be necessarily completed by the time we reach this final number.
Yeah.
But that's what we're, what we came down.
I think actually tomorrow night at the SSBC meeting, we're going to see if the committee, the SSBC, will authorize Mike Gilberto to select a small group of, of the committee members to sit down and negotiate with Gilbane to get a closeout number. And that closeout number would include, you know, holding back or retaining sufficient money to finish up the punch list items. And I think the two major issues that we still have out there are the several issues, but I think the drainage issue and the landscaping issue are the two major ones. So, would, that, my approving anything to, any closeout at all would include the retainage to cover those.
The difficulty for, a little bit of background on it, there are, throughout the project, there are items that are put forward as contractors saying that it's an extra cost. And many of those are agreed on. Yes, it was, in fact. Some of those are disputed, and some are said by our side of the fence that they're included in the, in the project, and the contractor will say, no, they weren't part of the project. And so, there's a dispute over it. And, and what we're, what the, the idea here is that those disputes are going to be reconciled, and there will be a, a number reached.
Try to compromise on some of those.
Compromises on what, what we owe them for the completed project. That isn't that we would pay them all of that before all of the work is completed, but that, that's the disputed items are all reconciled. Next is the Athletic Facilities Committee, met on the thirteenth. Mr. Webster?
We met with a representative from CBI, the engineering firm that was awarded the contract for helping us and to design the restroom slash concessions facility at Kenny Field. We were presented some design options with some costs. From there, we then proceeded a couple days later down to the Kenny Field to look at just to place where those facilities might be on the field. And they had marked out a new area, but then when we started looking at it, we said, you know, why are we marking out a new area? That old building is an old building. It's an eyesore. It's going to take a lot to repair it. It's going to have to have some kind of foundation put under it. And what we finally came to a decision on was that on this Thursday night at our meeting, we're going to get three different options for the current concession stand site. You know, ideally, if the town had the money and, and can, can finance what needs to be financed or bonded, we'd build a joint restroom concession facility. So, the options are going to be just restrooms, a restroom and a concession facility, or a restroom, a phased project with a restroom first with a plan to do the concession down the road.
And we're going to keep an open mind.
And we're going to keep an open mind.
Based on the presentation.
There, the other thing that we've asked, and they're going to come in with this, although they won't, they won't have full bids, Rita Mullin from Parks and Rec has talked to some other communities that have had these types of facilities built, and it seems that in those communities, the stick-built or built up from the ground buildings have come in at a lower cost than the prefab buildings that we've been looking at. So, Mike Gilberto and I have asked CBI to at least give us an idea for stick-built costs for the three options also. Mike has informed me that the selectmen will be, hope to sign the warrant for the special town meeting in March on February sixth. He says that the plan is to have a placeholder on there for this, a vote on this facility at Kenny Field. But it would be my recommendation that our committee take a vote before February sixth to make a recommendation to the selectmen to give them some time to think it over. I'm not going to recommend we take a vote this Thursday night. We'll get all the input, we can discuss, and then in a couple weeks have a meeting and take a vote, and then make a recommendation to the selectmen.
The theory would be if we can get this approved at the special town meeting, we could get construction started and maybe completed by the end of the year, right?
Correct.
As opposed to waiting until June and maybe not getting it done until the following year.
And the other issue we discussed was just fundraising, continued fundraising for the irrigation and sod project. The irrigation and sod are in. We still need to continue to raise funds. There are a couple of fundraising ideas that we have, and we probably pursuing in the next, the next few months, springtime, late spring. That's it.
Okay, Athletic Subcommittee met on January third.
We did, and Mike Conley gave us an update on the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen athletic revolving account. And we should, if all goes well, end of fiscal year with a balance of about a thousand dollars. We've really dipped into it.
Yep.
We've more or less borrowed money from that account to help pay for the sod and irrigation of the fields down below. We're hoping to, again, raise the money to pay that account back. I think it was, Mel, about twenty-three thousand dollars that we're looking at.
Twenty-three thousand seventy-five now.
Seventy-five dollars. So, we talked about, I think, a bit of an increase, Mike, in the busing runs by the athletic teams. That's gone up a little bit more than we had anticipated. But it's not gone up as much as it possibly could have, I think, to three hundred.
Yeah, we, we are, what we're actually finding is the average rate that we're paying under this contract, is the way it was structured, is actually less than what it's been in the past. But it was just, you know, we're seeing some more runs based on the need this year. So, we just got to monitor it.
We talked a little bit, Dave Johnson, the Athletic Director, updated us a little bit on the Cooperative Ski Team. I forget the number, how many people do we have?
Three or four.
Four, four?
Four kids that are taking advantage of it. So, that's a start. And I think that's in April. We talked about the, as Mel already updated us on the Athletic Facilities Committee in an update. What else? Anything else we discussed?
That's about it.
We did talk about, we're going to closely, we hope to have the girls varsity softball team play all their games at the new field in the spring. However, we're going to kind of monitor that. And Mr. Johnson said that several of the early games are away games.
Right.
We just want to make sure that that grass takes and is.
Conditions, yeah.
Hundred percent growing strong before we let people on there.
And if it's not, we have the little school facility, so it's not a problem. We'd just like to make sure that it's all, the grass is taken and, and it's ready for play, so.
Correct.
I think that was pretty much it.
Subcommittee is scheduled. There's an SSBC meeting tomorrow night here at five thirty. Athletic Facilities Committee at six thirty on the twelfth. NOCAM on the twenty-sixth at seven. Finance Planning Team meets on January twenty-seventh at eight fifteen. Superintendent's Office. Athletic Subcommittee, February seventh at twelve thirty, in the Superintendent's Office. And we'll go on to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I move into that, would you mind, we're, since the discussion a few moments ago, we're thinking that it might be wise for the committee to vote on the agreement for the end of year, end of fiscal year reporting, that the committee endorses moving forward with this, Michael.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. They may ask for minutes that it was officially endorsed.
So, I think a vote that the school committee endorses this agreement would be sufficient.
Okay. So, we will back up to the end of year, end of fiscal year report that town and school department agree.
I move, I move to have the school committee endorse the end of fiscal year report as presented by Mr. Conley.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you. So, just a few things to report on, and I attached quite a few documents for you tonight, some just informational, but others for you to, to have. The first is that I received a, a letter shortly after the start of the school year from the Department of Education inviting us, meaning the district, to attend what I think is a real feather in, in our cap ceremony at the State House. It's a ceremony that the Department of Education is hosting to honor two thousand and sixteen commendation schools, National Title I Distinguished Schools, and two thousand and sixteen National Blue Ribbon Schools. And you might recall back when results of the state standardized testing were released in the fall, the Batch Elder School had been identified as a, as a commended school for its high level of performance on the two thousand, spring two thousand and sixteen state standardized test. So, there was a ceremony that's going to be held at the State House on February first. And Mr. Colleen, the Batch Elder School Principal, Dr. Daley, the Assistant Superintendent, I've invited both of them to accompany me. So, I think it's a nice, certainly a nice testimony, if you will, to the good work that's going on and a recognition of the, particularly of the Batch Elder Schools' performance. The second thing, and there's a couple of attachments in your packet, just a brief update for you, that the Community Impact Team in town continues to be very active. In fact, there was a board meeting just this morning. And in my role, not only as a member of the board, but also as the chairman of the K-12 Action Team, which is largely responsible for bringing informational programs to our schools and to the community, there are a number of things that we have planned for the year. So, I thought I would highlight those for, for the committee and also for the community, beginning with a presentation called Dirt, a one-man show of substance abuse and choices. That's going to be on February thirteenth. We had John Morello at the high school several years ago when I was the principal, and we've been able to secure funds both through the high school's professional development, development account and also the Community Impact Team to bring John back to present to the juniors and seniors. And something that we didn't do when he was here several years ago is we're also doing a presentation for parents. If you are at all available and interested, I will tell you that in the, in the thirty years I worked in public education, he was one of the best programs we brought to students. His show was outstanding. It's about an hour. It's a one-act show. He does the whole thing himself. It's, it's, it's very good. So, that's on February thirteenth. It's, again, it's a, it's a, it's a program designed to help students make healthy quality of life decisions. And we thought by bringing parents in at night, it might give them some good information that they could have some talking points with their children who have seen the program earlier in the. talking points with their children who have seen the program earlier in the day. The Community Impact Team will be hosting its third North Reading night off on Tuesday, March 14th. So, I'm hoping that, Dan, you can give us a little press on trying to limit the number of community activities that go on from 5 o'clock on that evening. There will be more information coming about, out about some of the restaurants in town that will be offering specials for parents, families that might want to either go out to dinner or do takeout and kind of just spend some quality time together. Another informational flyer in your packet is for Dr. Ruth Poty. She will be coming to North Reading for a community event on May 18th. I know it's early, but people's calendars fill up. But, she does a very nice program. I was, I was actually informed about her. She presented in Linfield earlier this year, earlier this school year. And she speaks about adolescent development, gives some kind of parenting strategies and what parents can come to expect as their children age into the beloved teenage years. So, she was very well-received in Linfield, and I'm happy that we're able to bring her to North Reading. And again, there will be more publicity about her as that date of May 18th nears, but I thought I would get it on the radar now. And I'm also, I guess pleased, to be the right word, it's an unfortunate thing that we have to do, but I do think that the Mark accident, the Mark car crash that we have presented to high school students in the past is coming back, largely through the work of our Students Against Destructive Decisions chapter and the local police department. It's a very good partnership that we've had. We've presented the Mark accident several times and kind of in an off-year so that classes that don't see it one year will always see it before they graduate high school. And that is coming on this year, May 23rd, onsite, probably in the lower parking lot area on May 23rd, with a rain date of May 24th if we should need it. So, as you can see, the Community Impact Team continues to be pretty active. I also included, this is just for your informational purposes and kind of required by statute, as in my role as a representative of the Board of Directors at both the SEEM Collaborative and the North Shore Education Collaborative, required to present you with a copy of the annual report for each of those special education collaborative schools, both of which I could just tell you very succinctly are doing very well fiscally and also are doing well on behalf of students that, from North Reading, that attend those schools, to have their special needs addressed beyond what we might be able to do in our system. And it is, it is not only the right thing to do from an educational standpoint, but it does also present a very significant financial savings by North Reading being members at both of those special education collaboratives. So, their annual reports are enclosed for you.
Do the reports detail how many students from our district?
These reports don't, but I do get a report, and I have traditionally given that to the committee when it's available. I usually get that sometime later in the school year. And it will, it will, it will show the number of students from our community that are enrolled, and also what the cost benefit is by us being a district that's a member. And it exceeds six figures. But, the numbers for North Reading are not substantial in terms of the number of students attending, but the cost savings is. But, I, that is information I will have.
Okay.
And, and I have in the past made it as part of, part of my Superintendent's Report to the committee. But, the annual report tends to be more of just kind of a summary of the year's events. And then the last thing I have is, I think we started this last year, if I'm not mistaken, was just kind of a mid-year update from the principals on the work of their school councils in meeting the goals established in their school improvement plans. And so, we kind of keep that as a live document. We find that that's been working well for us. And as, as things get achieved, the principals can kind of go in and, and update that document. And then, I, I chose this time to, to present it to you as we approach the mid-year of the, of the 2016-17 school year. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Future business, we have a, a regular meeting at the Bachelor's School at 6:30 on January 23rd. We have a regular meeting at the middle, at the middle school presentation on February 6th at 6:30, and a regular meeting on February 27th at 6:30. And that is a meeting, we have a need for two members to go to a selectmen's meeting.
I'm sorry?
We have a need for two members, so it was discussed on Friday.
What was that regarding, the selective?
Healthcare.
Oh, I know, I know, the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. The, it had been talked about at the, at the Finance Planning Team meeting, that I have gone to the Insurance Advisory Committee's meetings in the past, but the town administrator mentioned that if the committee wanted representation from its own body, that if one or two representatives wanted to attend, and I think that date is Thursday, January 19th. That meeting's at 4 o'clock. Thank you for bringing that up, at the, in the selectmen's meeting room at the town hall. So, I think probably the committee should decide which one or two representatives to send.
Do we have a volunteer or two?
I'll go.
Who'll go? And I, I'm planning on going, too.
Are you looking, Janine?
I'll put it in my calendar.
You're going to put it in your calendar?
What does that mean?
It means that if I can make it, I'll make it.
So, what time is that, January 19th?
Four. It's Thursday, January 19th, 4 o'clock. I would say to you that those meetings traditionally last between 60 and 90 minutes. Give or, give or take.
Janine, if you find that you cannot, you let me know, and I will go.
You gave me an extra five years.
So, we need to go to that.
I have to post if we're going to do that.
We have to post it. I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Hey, look at that, an hour.